Six.
Thank you. Good job.
Request to carryover funding from fiscal year 2022, 23 to fiscal year 2023, 24, amend the fiscal year 2023, 24 budget, other capital improvement plan, project ordinances, and internal service spending, service fund spending plans, and we have a presentation.
May I ask?
Yes, you may.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the staff is gathering to begin this presentation for you this afternoon, I did want to take a few moments to address the employees who are here, inclusive of the 2,655 employees that have a heart for service, and they come to work every single day to serve the residents of Durham. Whether that is by emptying a recycling bin or picking up a trash can in an office, whether it is ensuring that the technology works, whether it is working with the family who has had a loved one to pass away. It may be a fleet maintenance technician that is changing a tire for a fire truck so a firefighter can go to an emergency. Or it may be a community safety employee who is working with someone who is in crisis. It may be a police officer who is going to investigate an incident that has happened or respond to an incident that has happened. The reason we are here today is to speak about what we may invest in, what we may be able to fund from savings that we have on an annual basis. This is not a new process. We do it every single year. We did it last year around this time. When our fiscal year is over and we determine what our actual activities are, we then know what is in our unallocated fund balance. The majority of the priorities that we fund, we don't work on that in just one day or one week. We start with that process almost as soon as it ends the last time. We begin our kickoff in January, and we have a lot of processes to engage our residents, engage our employees, engage our elected officials, so that we can take the limited resources that we have, primarily from taxes and fees, in order to fund the highest priorities that we have as an organization to serve the community. When we do get to this point that you are about to hear from staff, we are proposing to you how we plan to allocate funding that has not already been used. Funding can only be used one time, and spending a dollar in one place removes it from the ability to spend it in another place. So we know that these allocation decisions are very difficult. We expect them to be. And we are here today to provide you information to help you make the best decision that you can with the unallocated funds that we have at this time. So thank you for the opportunity to introduce this item.
Thank you, City Manager Page. Turn it over to you.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem and members of council. Christina Riordan, Budget and Management Services. I'm here today to provide you with an update on the carryover recommendation. As City Manager Page has said, this process is one that we do every single year. And these are recommendations we make to council at this time of the year on the use of fund balance. They're based on data that we have as we close out the fiscal year and as we receive kind of our last sales tax payment, which just happened in September. So normally, you get this as a packet in your agenda. It's an agenda item you receive. But this year, I'm going to present you with a presentation to kind of walk you through our recommendations and some of the specifics around this year's carryover agenda item. So as a reminder, there is really only one funding source that we talk about when we're talking about our carryover request, and that is fund balance. So at this time of the year, our revenue sources are set. You know, we've already set our property tax for the year, which is our major revenue source. And so this is the time of year where we kind of look at our fund balance and make recommendations on our carryover process and how to use some of that fund balance. As you all are well aware, the city has a fund balance policy that we follow. And that policy, as you can see from this slide, which just kind of has a little quote from it, is there to help, you know, fund balance is there for the event of an emergency or unforeseen circumstances. And it is also one of the major factors that are considered by our bond rating agencies. And just as a reminder, our fund balance policy states that our unassigned fund balance amount should be 16.7% of our adjusted budget and that it can only be used for one-time purposes. So I'm about to walk you through some of our historical fund balance information and also about how we've calculated fund balance for this fiscal year and the coming fiscal year. And some of the information I want to talk to you about is about a projection. And I wanted to provide you with some of the assumptions that we have used on how to determine that. And these projections are important because they help us determine how much fund balance we currently have available and how much we think we have available for future years as well. So on this slide, we have some of the assumptions that we have used. And the first one is that I will be talking about general fund, fund balance. There's fund balance in all our funds, but most of our employees and services sit in our general fund, and that's what we'll be focused on today. Not all fund balance is available for appropriation. The fund balance we're going to be talking about today is unassigned fund balance, but there is parts of the fund balance that are already appropriated and that we won't be talking about. For some of the years, I will be talking about actuals, which means that they come from our annual comprehensive financial report, which is the audit that our finance department completes every year. And that happens usually at the end of October. So for FY '23, the finance department is still working on that projection. We think we have a pretty good number here for you today, but I just want to warn you that it can change slightly as they finish out that audit process. The fund balance for FY '24 and '25 that you'll see is a projection, and I'm going to walk you through some of our thinking on that. And then also, just to let you know that we have taken a consideration of the pay market study implementation in FY '25. So on this slide, you will see a chart that shows the city's fund balance history. And as I previously stated, fiscal year '18 through '22 are actuals. FY '23 is our unaudited amount. And then FY '24 and '25 are projections that we'll be talking about, our assumptions, a little bit later in the presentation. So we always assess our fund balance as a percentage of our adjusted budget, and that is the third line that you see in the chart. You know, our fund balance policy that I referenced before states that we must maintain 16.7% of that adjusted budget. And that is really the floor that we have for our fund balance. We cannot go below that 16.7 without having a kind of a plan in place for how to replace it in the next fiscal year. So we don't want to be at the 16.7 because it doesn't allow us any sort of room to spend fund balance on other things. And also, 16.7, just to give you some perspective, is about two months of the city's operating budget. So the kind of main target percentage that I want to highlight and that's highlighted in the chart is 25%. And this is a target that staff believe is a best practice for the city of our size and something that our rating agencies kind of want to see when we go before them to get our rating. And this is where we would like to kind of maintain our fund balance. So as you can see from kind of the chart in the lower right-hand corner, historically, we have been trying to kind of get to that 25%. And then in years, especially years '22 and '23, we are above that 25%. And so what we are proposing with this use of fund balance and our carryover recommendation is that we take fund balance back down to 24.7 or close to that 25%. And that will allow us to be within that targeted range. And that also, we also want to look out at the following year as well to see that we are still maintaining that 25%. And that's important because when your, because fund balance is a percentage, when your budget grows, the amount of fund balance you need to maintain a percentage has to grow as well, too. So that's kind of a difficult concept to explain. But you know, amount and percentages are, you know, different concepts. So we want to maintain that percentage because that's what is going to be looked at by the rating agencies and also what we need to maintain our cash flow as we think about the city and our needs. Okay. So why does fund balance matter? And as I've started to talk about, our rating agencies strongly consider fund balance when they are assigning our credit rating. It's also important for the fiscal health of the city. And one of the things about Durham is that we are a AAA rated city, which just was confirmed this last week as well, too. There was a press release that just went out. And that is a distinction that not many cities in the state have. It also allows us to borrow at the best rate possible for the city when we go out. So this slide is really just a representation of what a one-notch downgrade in the city's geo-bond rating, the impact it would have on a 20-year bond. So in the first example, a $300 million bond at 20 years would cost the city $1.5 million extra if we went down one notch in our credit rating. On a $100 million bond, it would be $525,000. And of course, the impact is greater with every additional notch downgrade. So this slide is kind of giving you some details on the projection for FY '24 and '25. And on the left side, you will see some of the key drivers of how we calculated our fund balance. One of the key drivers is the bonus cost for a potential bonus in FY '24. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in detail. But some of the other drivers for FY '24, we have a beginning fund balance, and then there are things that get appropriated out of that, which is our appropriation fund, fund balance, which is $13.8 million, which is what is currently appropriated in the FY '24 budget for one-time items. Our carryover recommendation, which are the departmental requests that you have in your memo today and which is what we normally bring forward to you at this time, which are one-time items that departments need to get done in FY '24. The bonus. And then you'll also see a number for our projected budget variance. We always know that there is some amount of variance from our budget to actuals. And so we have kind of taken that into consideration when we're doing this calculation. So with that, that gets you to an ending unassigned fund balance number of $64.8 million, which, as we talked about on the previous slide, is 24.7% of adjusted budget. In FY '25, the assumption really takes into account our budget variance. We have not made any other assumptions for that. The only thing I would like to point out is that in FY '25, our adjusted budget does include an estimate for the pay study implementation. And as you can see, we've used about $21.2 million as an estimate for that. This would, we wouldn't use fund balance to pay for a pay study implementation because it would be an ongoing cost. So a revenue source would need to be found for this. And that would have to be something that would be determined in our budget process. But just to give some perspective, if we were to use tax revenue to pay for that, our current tax rate, every time we raise taxes one cent, we generate about $4.1 million. So $21.2 million is about a 5% tax increase. Oh, sorry, a 5-cent tax increase. I said percent. I apologize. So moving on, I wanted to talk about the bonus recommendation that we're presenting today, which is in this year's carryover and which would add to the $300 bonus that is already currently included in the budget. Staff wanted to make a recommendation that was based on data that recognized the contribution of all employees that applied an equity lens and also applied an equity lens on how bonuses are distributed. The bonuses in this recommendation are tiered, as I said, to promote equity. Employees who earn more will receive less. And they cover all full-time and part-time employees. And as you can see from the chart, there is a cost for the general fund and then a cost for, the total cost is the amount across all funds. So the majority of our employees sit in our general fund, but not all employees sit in our general fund. And so that $6.5 million is when you distribute it across all the funds. We did consider some other scenarios, which I provided in that third bullet. I do want to say that, you know, this was just used kind of because we had heard some discussion on council. It's not intended to be another recommendation. It's really just to give some perspective on, you know, considering a $5,000 bonus for half the workforce, what that cost would be as opposed to the recommendation we're making today. So finally, I just wanted to talk about the amendment that is actually in your packet. So we do have to do an ordinance amendment to our operating budget. And in the general fund, you will see, if you look on the ordinance, that there is a $24.2 million amendment that we're doing. And so I kind of wanted to walk you through what that number is. So the first part of it is our carryforward, which that is really items that have already been budgeted for in the previous year, but then kind of roll into our new budget. And then we have the carryover items, which I've talked about, which is $3.5 million. Our employee bonus recommendation, which is 4.8. And then some other minor adjustments, which have to do with some additional revenue sources that some of our departments are anticipating receiving in FY '24. So the only two items in this list that will affect our unassigned fund balance calculation are our carryover and our employee bonuses. And with that, I will take any questions.
Colleagues. Questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Quiet. Thank you so much for the presentation. I could not wait to this moment. I really could not because here's where we get to have a real conversation. Not in the media, not charlatans telling you who hates workers and who doesn't, not folk running for office trying to use this as a platform. I said at the end of the meeting Monday night that you absolutely deserve bonuses. There's no one on this council that disagrees with that. And I want to narrow down who I'm talking to first today. If you really believe that there are people on this council that say, "We hate sanitation workers. We don't think that they're worth it. That we think they should be mistreated." And there are people who are championing and saying, "No, they are worth it." If you really believe that's how the conversation is going, I don't know what to say to you, if you really believe that. What's really going on, one person, "we." What's really going on, are there people? Well, if you believe that, okay. I don't know what to say to that if you really believe that there are people that think that way about people in the city. I don't know what to say to that. Well, I can talk to the rest of you, however, about this job and all of the factors that you hired us to look at when we make these decisions, when you turned the city's checkbook over to us. All of the things that come into play, not only what we have in the bank right now, but what we have coming down the pike for our city. Kind of like the way you run your household. If something breaks down in your house, having to deal with it. So one of the questions I have is, well, let me say this. Someone made a comment about the contractors to pick up the garbage. I grew up in a union household. I'm a pro-union person. My activism, I was trained in activism in the Alinsky tradition. I support unions, and I'm down with strikes. I have never, however, participated in the campaign where we started with the strike and then gave the demand. I've never seen that. Even the UAW has asked for 40% over four years, not right now. So when we started with the strike out the gate, it created a situation where we had to respond in emergency mode as opposed to, here's what we want, let's engage in negotiation. If not, we're going to strike. So I've never seen that where you start with it. So when the strike started and garbage was on the street, the government has no choice but to, because it is now an emergency situation, to do whatever it has to do to make sure disease is not spread through the city, to make sure that the garbage gets picked up. Whereas if had we been negotiating and leading up to something and we didn't respond, and you say, "Okay, we walking out," that's what we've been accustomed to. So nobody was trying to disrespect you or replace you. The city manager has a legal obligation to respond to emergency situations in our city. And we could not, under any circumstances, allow the garbage to sit on the streets. We couldn't because all of our children would get sick. All of our people would be impacted by that. So when you went back to work, we're incredibly grateful. And I said that Monday night. But I want you to know that when it started with that, there was no place to escalate. And that's not the fault of the workers. I want to thank the workers that I've, and the leaders in this movement that wasn't in the media, but y'all know who you are, who I've had conversations with about this. Because quite honestly, I think some of the folk who have assumed leadership, I'm not talking about the workers, but some of the folk who have assumed leadership and have been strategists have done a disservice to this movement. And they know who they are. And we can have that conversation. I'm not talking about y'all who do the work. I'm talking about some of the folk who have assumed speaking for you and assumed leadership for you, as one. Two, you've seen some of the numbers that our staff has presented. One of the things, I guess, I've had questions about is, when did the $5,000 become the number? And what was the math that got us to that? Why not $7,000? Why not $10,000? How did we determine that $5,000 was the number? That this is the number that the city could do without breaking itself or lower wouldn't be enough or more than $5,000 would be too much? And I know that we've clung to that number. And if we do $5,000 for under $75,000, there are people who drive fire trucks that make more than $75,000. And there are people who drive fire trucks in this city who make more than $75,000. They would not be included in this bonus. So the city manager has brought forth a plan that says everybody's essential. And if we want to talk about the numbers, tweaking it, we can. I'm open to that. But that everybody is essential and that everybody deserves something. And while I want to say that, the notion that this city manager and this staff, this ushering at White Rock Baptist Church, raised her kids in Durham, died in the wool Durham, if you're going to let five or six people who get behind a microphone make the case that this city manager doesn't care about black folk, that this city manager, after all these years, she's been wearing the mask, and now all of a sudden, "Uh-huh, I'm not down with the folk." If y'all believe that and you're going to let five or six folk make that case, good luck with that. Y'all can talk about us as elected all you want. But this manager, and for all the talk about supporting black women, I'm surprised at the number of black women that have been attacked who have reached the top of their profession, who have given blood, sweat, and tears to this city. So if y'all want to listen to those folk, in spite of the record that go back 30 and 40 years in this city, this manager has done an excellent job. And let me say something. I've seen a couple of managers. We should be happy that this manager is in the seat. Because one of the things that we were focused on when COVID hit, while other cities and companies were laying people off, we were focused on how do we keep jobs? How do we not have to do away with jobs? Bonuses, how do we make sure they keep their paychecks during that period? And this manager and this team was focused on it. Now, we just got information from the state. Somebody sent us an email, and they sent us the language. You know what the language said? It was a statute that talked about what you're supposed to do when you engage in collective bargaining. It talked about what happens to employees who engage in the strike. I invite you to go Google that. So they're watching what we're doing here. They're watching Durham. So I don't care what you say about me as an elected or us, but what we will not stand for is for five or six folk who got time on their hand to create this ridiculous narrative that this city manager doesn't care about black folk. That's ridiculous. And I'm saying that politely. And if you want the real version, we can talk after the meeting, and I'll tell you exactly what it is. That's nonsense. She has worked hard, and this team has worked hard. The numbers you've seen today is what it looks like to run a city. And you have trusted us to run the city. Now, this is a hard job, but there are two very easy things about this job that's required. And I'm done. One of the things that's required is we have to listen to you. And the other thing that's required that's real easy is we have to tell you the truth. And sometimes, the truth in this job is uncomfortable. You didn't hire us just to do exactly what we say when we do it at the moment we do it. Because if that were the case, you wouldn't need us. We could just run the city by referendum. You hired us to read the stuff that nobody else wants to read, to make the calculations that nobody else wants to calculate, to do the work that nobody else wants to do. That's what we were hired to do. So everybody on this council wants to give raises. And as a matter of fact, before the strike happened, the manager said we were already going to do the raises. It was already part of the plan. It was already part of the plan. So for the narrative that says that the strike is what made us look at the raises, that is absolutely not true. It is not true. And for those of you that have watched our meetings and watched the budget process, you already know that. So from us as the people you hired, to people, we have families that work in these jobs. We have folk we go to church with, folk that we love, folk that are friends, folk that we hang out with. From us to you, you see the numbers. Let's talk about the numbers. If we need to look at tweaking maybe more at the lower level, but I do not agree with only half of our workforce getting bonuses. Because for every truck that was out there during COVID, there's a mechanic that had to fix it. Somebody had to make sure our CAD/CAM computer systems were working so 911 could get the calls and get out there. There are a whole lot of people that work behind the scenes that are essential. Maybe you don't think we're essential, but every other employee in this organization is. And I'm fine with you not thinking we're essential, the people who you hand the checkbook to. The people who you hand the checkbook to, that's fine. But I think that everyone deserves a bonus that works in the city. I think that everybody deserves a significant raise. And I talk to people, my colleagues in other cities, all the time. There's one city that was mentioned that gave a big raise to their officers. And I had a conversation last week with their council people. They use their fund balance, and right now, they are talking about how they're going to sustain it next year, how they're going to pay for it. I am not just interested in getting applause right now. I'm not interested in stroking a check right now and saying, I'm a hero of the folk, knowing full well that if we're not in a position next year to sustain it, what have we done? I'm not going to make fun of people like that, and I'm not going to insult your intelligence. You absolutely deserve the money. It's your money, it's our money. But we're doing math as a city, not just for right now, friends. We're doing math for a city that we want to be here next year and beyond that. So, I thank the staff for their recommendations. You're going to get a raise. If it's 5,000 for 75,000,000 and under, or 5,000 for half, I like the plan that the manager has worked because it covers everybody. And if we want to tweak those numbers, I'm open to conversation from my colleagues as to what that looks like. But I don't think that just half of our workforce should get a bonus. I think the whole workforce should get a bonus and a real big fat raise when we do the comp plan. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Comments from council. Councilwoman Truman.
Thank you. I just had a few questions for, I guess, I'm not sure if it's on which side who's making the decision, but I did want to get some numbers around what it would look like to have all the workers at 75,000 or less getting that $5,000 bonus. And I don't know if you have that already, or...
I do not have that calculated.
And then, also would like to know what it would look like to have the 2019, like, all of the reinstatement numbers in front of us as well. I think what we're missing is... So, from the 2019 pay plan and all of the numbers we were looking at prior to with the budget, I just want to make sure that we're looking at those numbers as along with the current bonus conversation, because I do believe that this started from that. And it's not like just in a vacuum it occurred. But I want to make sure we have all those numbers in front of us. And then, I was just trying to figure out the numbers, and I might be off. But there was 240... Need I wrote it down? I think I wrote it down. But just noting that there was, from the carryover and the bonus and the other, the numbers didn't seem, like, I'm missing something.
Are you talking about the 24 million?
Yes. The adjusted balance?
That last slide that I showed, that would be the amendment that is in, that is done to the general fund. We will be increasing.
So, the adjusted balance would be going from 262,310 to 292,403? Or is that the additional amount to the current budgets? Like, are you adding that? I'm missing...
Yes, are you looking at the adjusted budget in the chart and trying to match it to the ordinance budget?
I think, I think I know what you're... You're talking about the projected budget for 2024 to 2025 in the general fund?
Yes.
So, there is an amount there. It's estimated to be about 30 additional million dollars between those two years. Our budget always grows because it always grows. Expenses always go up, our revenue goes up. The difference between those two years is specifically an estimate for implementation of the results of the market study. So, we would not put our normal growth there. Otherwise, we would not be able to implement the market study. So, we are projecting that between this year's budget that has already been adopted and the budget that we would be adopting in 2025, we want to make sure we have significant projections for the council's consideration. We already know what prior year market adjustments have added to our ongoing budget. The last market adjustment that we had for our public safety employees added $9 million additional to our personnel expenses when that market study was implemented. And it was, it was brought as a recommendation. It put us at the top of all of our peer cities, and it was approved and implemented. We always know that the market is constantly shifting. It doesn't stay the same. So, this time, we are expecting that number for all employees and for positions to adjust at some level. We don't have the results yet. We hope to have that come in January. But we know it is going to be an increase, and it's going to make the city's budget increase. So, what you see in this presentation today, including our other estimates for normal increases in our budget, about $30 million.
So, and I hear what you're saying. In the adjusted balance, is that a conservative number? Or is that, like, you're basing it off of year to year?
Well, thank you for that question, because it is a number that we don't know yet. But we do have, I think it's about 10% is that...
Yeah, for the...
Of current salaries.
The current, it would include the pay for performance and then an additional 10%.
And of that 10%, so what I'm trying to get to, so what I'm hearing you say is that our budget will be about $1 million, or, I mean, $1 billion with this additional 300 million. Is that, is that what you're saying?
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. The general fund budget right now is 262,000. The city's overall budget is across a lot of funds, but we're talking about the general fund, just the general fund. So, what you see there is the increase between years.
So, what I'm getting at is, when the general fund balance is that high and the city's budget, where would the, essentially, where would the reserve sit in that?
So, you want to speak...
So, yeah, so that is, so the ending fund, the ending unassigned fund balance is what we anticipate, that 74 million.
74.
As our, so the fund balance will grow.
And that's what you were getting at.
But also, our budget grows. And so, in order to maintain that percentage, because you're taking the unassigned fund balance as a percentage of the budget, if your budget grows a significant amount, you have to have more amount of fund balance to maintain, you know, whatever level you're deciding.
The current amount, I get you. The current amount is at 40-something. And you're saying we're going to need to be at 60 and then at 70?
Yes, yes.
And then, in order to get there from here, what we're saying is that we have to hold salaries where they are?
No, no, I'm not saying anything about salaries. I think what we're saying is that we wouldn't, that this pay implementation study wouldn't happen until next year.
I don't want to say it that way. It would just be the 10% is what I'm getting at. So, the 10% that you're estimating in salaries or personnel, whatever your increased amount is, you're saying that that 10% is what you use to come up with that number?
It is a projection of where we think our budget will be next year.
Okay. And so, I'm following you on that you need the fund balance to grow in order to have the reserves. But I'm trying to understand where... Was there ever a plan to actually, to pay staff from the 2019 pay plan? Was there a plan in place for that? And where did that go?
So, I'm going to try to respond to that. So, the 2019, the pay study that was done in 2019, it reset salaries for everybody that was included in that pay study. Just as in 2021, the market study that was done, it reset salaries.
Okay.
So...
So, when it reset, the plan that we have for 2021, it included the, I guess, the salary adjustments for police and fire, but it didn't include the adjustments for others. And now, those adjustments are where?
Thank you for that question. So, historically, the city has not done market adjustments for all employees at one time. It has been staggered. So, that is why, as you referenced, the 2019 study, it was for general employees. The 2021 study was for public safety employees. Every time there's a study done, we seek to adjust every, you know, whoever is in the study, we seek to adjust those wages to a new market, to a new baseline. It was recommended this year because the economy is changing and the market is changing, that we do a full study of all employees' positions that employees work in in the city at one time. And that is the 2023 study. So, that is where we stand today.
And I think, I'm okay with the 2023 study. What I'm trying to reconcile is, where did the dollars go in the plan when you reset?
So, I think how I would respond to that, there are no dollars in any plans. The plans, we have multi-year plans, we have master plans, we have strategic plans. But the budget that is adopted every single year, that becomes, that becomes the plan. So, there's no money set aside into the future for, you know, for a plan. It's adopted each year.
So, for 2023, the pay plan we receive would move forward. Everyone is reset, and you start from beginning again. And then...
That is correct.
The following year, when we go into the budget cycle, what happens to the, I guess, the salaries then?
So, the following year, after the reset, we would, you know, we would anticipate that our plans would be, you know, starting up again until we have another market study to reset, reset everyone.
So, in 2020, when we didn't do, we didn't do the reset. We were in the plan, and those dollars were there. Where did they go? Or where were they allocated to? I hear what you're trying to say, where there wasn't dollars. There weren't actual dollars. But there was an allocation made for 2019 into 2020.
So, the allocation, when the budget is adopted, the budget is adopted with the personnel, the personnel costs that the council adopts for that budget. So, that is the same that would occur for any type of expenses that we have. So, we have estimated revenue, we have estimated expenses. We call them appropriations. And when the year is over, if those revenues exceed those appropriations, it goes to fund balance. That is what we're talking about here. So, what the Budget Management Services Director has shown you is that if you just stop at 2022 and go backward, 18 to 2022, that is the actual, that is what happened.
So, with those dollars in fund balance, I think that's part of the conversation that we've been hearing. Folks have been trying to allocate it out of there. And I want to make sure that folks understand that what you're saying is, or what I'm hearing you say is, because the budget has been passed, that allocation wasn't made. And we're now looking at the over-allocation or the over, the carryover funds to do this bonus.
I would, I would agree that that is, that is correct. But it is, it is, we always do a carryover for one-time costs. Last year, we did it, and the majority of the, the majority of the, what we had in the request for carryover were all operational one-time costs. And that was somewhere in the near eight, eight-some million dollars. So, every year, when this, after we complete our audit and we have a clear picture of what unallocated, unallocated funds are, then we ask our departments to submit requests to us for one-time needs, whether it be vehicles, deferred maintenance items, you know, park equipment. And we did that this year. And this item that is in front of you includes, includes about $3.5 million of approved operational carryforwards. But we also in this item include a request to do bonuses. And that, that amount is, between the two of them, it's about $8 million. Little over $8 million, as you see in this item.
Okay, I got you. And so, just shifting a little bit, and just reviewing the budget itself, the allocations that are already in place, how do you change those?
The allocate, the adopted budget that was adopted on June, on June 20 of 2023, it is, the ordinance that we work in into the budget is adopted again. What you have before you is a proposed amendment to that budget. That amendment includes some things that we have to do, our carryforward items, things that were encumbered at the end of the year. And we have to put them in the new budget because we already have contracts for them. But in addition to that, this year, we have this request, and this amends the budget. It doesn't make additional revenue. It amends the budget by using funding that is already in the savings account.
So, if there were a program that we deemed could be put on hold, would that be done with a budget amendment? Or would that be done by... How would you change that in the budget?
So, any, any budget amendment that would be required, you know, certainly, every quarter, we, you know, we start, as soon as the budget is adopted, we start spending and providing services. So, we started that in July. And then, we come and let you know where we are at the end of that quarter. So, we don't do budget amendments, very many of them during the year. We may do two to three of them. But the budget is adopted, the ordinance is in place, and until it is amended, that is, that is what we use.
I will yield for now, but, yeah.
Councilwoman Jose Hymn?
Oh, yes. So, I thank my mayor, Pro Tem, for his comments. So, I just need some clarity on when did the city manager know that there were some issues with not only the sanitation workers, but some of all your city employees, like, pay? Because what I'm hearing is that the reason why they did a strike, and again, that's why I'm asking, is because they weren't not, they weren't being heard before. But what was alluded today was that they striked, and then they wanted to come and discuss a pay raise. So, I just need some clarity, because there's something not clicking together. So, I'm just kind of trying to figure out, when did you begin to hear that there were issues? Because what I'm hearing, and again, that's why I'm asking, is that they haven't been heard. And the last resort was, because we're not being heard, we're going to move to this. But that's not what Mayor Pro Tem is alluding to. So, that's why I want to make sure that I understand what happened.
So, I don't know if I will be able to make you understand what happened. But what I will be able to say is that we are always hearing, we are always hearing from employees, from the community. We're always hearing from folks about what they prioritize that the city should be, you know, putting their funding into. We're always hearing that. So, I'm not really certain, but I haven't heard, you know, I did not hear about this particular demand until you, till everyone here heard about it. The budget was already adopted at that time.
So, I just got one more. Right. And so, you know, I also want to speak to the fact that this kind of separation on who, people who do feel you need to get a raise and people who don't feel you need to get a raise, and that we all care about you getting a raise. Well, it's just really baffling to me, because again, I was appointed in May, and I know that y'all have been talking about this for years. And I know that y'all have been talking about this for years. And I also know that there have been people on this council who've been here for years. And so for us to get to this point that people have to strike, somebody wasn't listening to somebody before. And also, I know, and I'm going to say it again for a fact, that I brought up the firefighters issue with a raise in pre-budget, and everybody thought I was crazy. And nobody, they just kind of dismissed me. So I just, I'm really concerned about the narrative of you, you know, some of my councilmen, well, not some, but Mayor Pro Tem is saying, like, there's people who are for it and people who are not for it. I think we all agree that you need to be paid. The issue that I'm having now is like, all of a sudden, now there's some people saying you need to be paid. When before, when the mayor asked for the motion, well, and Freeman put the motion on second date, it did not pass. So I'm really confused with the narrative. Bottom line is, let's stop playing who's for it, who's not for it. Everybody has seen who was for it. Let's give them the money that they need. I would like to see the bonus, but I would also like to see their step pay. Now, I don't, again, I'm not a financial whiz, so I don't know how that would look. But that's what I would like to see. And let's see if we can run the numbers. Let's see, because they've been axing, you know, it's really hard to, especially what I've just been through, to sit here and say, oh, yes, we care about you. Oh, yes, we support you. But then you're not moving in the direction, and you could have moved in the direction a long time ago. So I'm very confused. And to me, it is an issue of, because, again, we, three of us, and I already got an issue with somebody on this council who said, stop saying that, stop saying it. Well, I don't really say much, but I'm going to say it. Three people did vote for it before, and it did not happen. So there is a narrative of three, four. And we're going to keep saying it. But all of a sudden, everybody, oh, yes, we want, because of things going on now in the cycle of people voting. And that's just what I feel. My opinion. Thank you.
If I could. So I'm just trying to put things in perspective in my own mind. If I remember correctly, as we were going through the budget cycle, and I thank you for some understanding there on this city manager page. OK, so in 2019, because I do think that we have to kind of revisit for, at least for me, to get a historical perspective. During those COVID years, 2019 and 2020, I believe,
2020 and 2021.
In 2019, you had a pay study. And then that was just for general employees, right? So not everybody was included in that pay study.
But all the salaries were adjusted.
But all salaries were adjusted at that time?
In general.
General, OK. In 2021, we had the police and fire pay study. And they were adjusted at that time?
Yes.
OK. So in 20, so we're getting ready to do a full study. I guess my question is, once those salaries were adjusted, not everybody's salary, as a result of that, was adjusted. So you still had employees in both pay studies whose salaries were not adjusted. Is that correct?
So every time we do a pay study, a market study in general, and I want to go way back into history, but I would say that in modern years, whenever there's a pay study, most employees receive some type of adjustment to their base pay if it is warranted. And I will say that in 2019, that is very likely the case, as well as in 2021. I cannot say with 100% certainty that every single position got an increase. But that is what a market study does. A market study looks at the positions and it determines the, you know, whether or not the position is in the range of market for what the job does. And we always increase salaries across the board. So that is, that is the response.
So when we were going through some numbers during that budget cycle, we talked about numbers. I remember it was like an eight million dollar number and a nine million dollar number that we were talking about for adjustments. If we had done it back then in 2019, 2020, we talked about those numbers, right? OK, so fashion that into what you've just told us about. If we had done those numbers, the 8.9 and the nine million dollar, it's what I'm recalling off the top of my head. If that had been done during that time, I think we were making motions, when I was making motions, it was to do that, to have that correction done, since there was not a correction done. If I remember correctly, you gave me those two numbers. It was a 8.9, and it was a close to a nine million dollar number. That's the number that I'm trying to figure out, what happened or what didn't happen for us to even talk about that step? Because the fire department and the police department, when they've come to us, they said, we want our step. That was the first thing that they asked us. Can we get the step? So we tried to ask to have that number quantified. What did that mean in terms of actual numbers? So my question, I guess, to you is, how can we go back to that original request for those folks during those years to make that whole? That would be my question number one. Question number two is, we know we have to have, I've heard you say, we have to have reoccurring funds for when you're making these kind of adjustments. You just can't, you know, you just can't throw in this number. You got to have a way to replace it. OK, so at the same time, when we passed this year's budget, we, some of us voted to approve an eight million dollar expansion, I want to say, somewhere around there, to the heart program. So how do you? What was that number that we used to expand the heart program? What was that amount? Because that's going to be reoccurring monies, correct? How much was it?
It was nowhere near eight million.
But how much was it that we used to expand? I can't remember.
I don't like to just give numbers off the top of my head, but I
Somewhere in the millions.
It was about a million or something like that. But I can try, we can try and get that number for you.
So if you look at, so I guess my point is not to just pick out one, but if you look at those programs within that budget that were going to be expanded, which that means that's going to be a reoccurring money, could that not be used, since we're going to have to amend the budget, to deal with what didn't happen in 2019 and 2020?
So I'm just going to try to respond the best I can to the questions that you have. In the 2020 and 2021, were years, were COVID years. There, you know, there were people who worked, who were working for us then that don't work for us now. As a matter of fact, we have probably eight, I believe, about 800 employees that weren't even working here when, after COVID had been in existence for almost a year and a half. So what you received in those numbers during the budget hearings, which were back in May, was just calculating the pay plan amounts, either 4% or 5%, and providing you with a dollar figure for if those standard, you know, generalized percentages would have been provided during the time that they weren't provided and other compensation was provided, that would have been the amount. It wasn't really directly tied to people, individual people. But it would have been the amount. So that is where the numbers came from during the budget process that you were referencing.
OK, so in order, we now know today who was, or just in general, you know who was working during those COVID years. We know who was working, that's still working for the city. So my question still goes back to, if those persons were given their step, the ones who still remain, is it possible to do that correction? And at the same time, since we have to pull, we'll have to pull those monies for recurring, that we take a look at things that we were either going to expand or new projects that we were investing and use that. So a substitution, make the correction to those folks who are still here that was not done then and reallocate from our budget those places where we were going to expand. For instance, you know, we were going to expand heart. I'm pretty sure there was some other places that we were going to expand. But is that a possibility to try to make that correction? And then we also need to talk about, because I am with, I'm not going from where I was, and that is, I think they deserve their step if that was what was to happen and did not happen. And then we need to also talk about a bonus as we are trying to get ready to do this pay study. So just trying to figure out how we do both.
So a step, you know, this is a step that wasn't adopted in a year where you had a budget ordinance. That, there's no offsetting revenue to go back and get for that because it's not really, it wasn't adopted in the budget. So the only thing you can do is calculate the amount and find future money in order to implement that. Whenever the budget is adopted, if you thought that there was going to be 5% increase in it, but we only have 2% or 3%, then that is all the money that you have. You don't have additional funding in, to do, you know, to do that. So what you are asking is, can an adopted budget have reallocations in it, taking from something and adding to something else? Technically, yes, that can happen within a budget, if the funding has not already been committed or spent. But when you, when you have a budget ordinance, that is what provides the direction to the departments to go ahead and enter into contracts, hire employees. It is, it is the budget that makes the city go. And that budget has, that budget started on July 1st.
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I appreciate your questions about, I remember that conversation about the eight or nine million. And what it hinged on, and I remember because I think I was the one who raised the question, was how much were we going to raise taxes in order to do it? And at that point, at that time, the county had already implemented, I think, either three or two cent tax rate. And the point was, we would be looking at an unprecedented five to seven cent tax rate at one time on our residents and citizens. And what I said was, I wasn't really interested in giving you money this year with my left hand and then taking it, a bunch of it in taxes with this huge tax increase with my right hand the other year. I wanted to find a way to give the money as we increased our budget with no tax increase to get you more money in your hands without also raising taxes. And that might require an incremental approach as opposed to a one-time dump. The other thing I want to say, and I appreciate Councilmember Hyman, you know, your questions to the council. And what I love about these meetings is that they're archived. You can go watch our old meetings. And the narrative that all of a sudden, we're just interested in giving raises or that people looked at you crazy when you brought that issue up just isn't true. And you can look at the meetings. When every person on this council, when, I don't, and show me the tape where we looked at you crazy. What happened was, the administration said that we were going to have a comp study. And everyone on this council was cool with it at that point. We just, we heard about that. And here's what's interesting. We didn't get into this hot, we didn't have this hot and heavy conversation. We start the budget in January. This wasn't going on in January when we were begging people to come to public hearings, when we could have dealt with this, when we were talking about the expansion of heart and others. We weren't having these, go back and look at the tapes. We weren't having these kind of conversations. There was no advocacy to this degree when we, before we passed the ordinance. We got within weeks of passing the budget. What is different, and UE 150 sends us, I've been on the council for almost however many years. I have always voted for payment, for salary increases for our employees. So I didn't, I'm not new to this. I didn't just get to, oh, let's give them raises. Now, I've been doing this for years. UE 150 gives us demands every year. There's no year that we don't hear from them. What was different this year is this year, we actually had members, elected officials, who telegraphed, quite honestly, that we can shame the others into doing certain things. We have never had public officials sit up here and say, they're the problem, look at them, look at us. That has never happened on this council. That is what has, they forgot where they came from. We don't talk to, we've never talked to each other like that on this council. And we've gone at it, some of us on this council. But we've never said you've, things like, you forgot where you came from, or you don't care about the people. We have never had that level of dialogue on this council. That's what happened this, that's what was different. And because that was different, there, you know, people that we've heard from every year showed up a couple of weeks before passing the budget as opposed to January when we started it. And that's where it got this hot and heavy. Now, I'm all for going back and looking at, you know, if we want to move money around. That's a prerogative of the council. What I will not co-sign on is this mythology, this narrative that, you know, we just brush people to aside. And again, go back and look at our meetings from when we sure started talking about the budget and show me where all of this was going on then, where all of this advocacy was going on. Show it to me. The meetings are archived. And so that's what's different. So, and I appreciate the advocacy of the three, you know, the four, whatever you want to call it. But the reality is, is that all of us are doing our best to try and make sure we do right by our people. And the notion that three care and four don't care has not been helpful. And moreover, it's just not true. It's just not true. And some of us have a record to show that. So I think that, to the mayor's point, the eight or nine million, if we want to, you know, revisit and address the tax issue, I'm here for it. But moving forward, and I think part of the problem with the step plan is that, I see, I think part of the problem with the step plan is that the plan is not a promise. We have talked about the step plan as if it was contractual. The plan is a plan. We plan to do that each year as a city. And in the years we couldn't do it, so we can actually address it by giving a big fat raise after this comp plan. We can actually capture whatever amount we were going to do in the step plan. We could capture that in this next budget if we want to, or this next, when we get the comp plan, we can give a big fat raise if we want to going forward. But the plan was not a contract. So I just want to say that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Caballero, followed by Councilwoman Jose Hyman. I'm going to try to see if we can keep our comments, especially if we're already allowed others to be able to speak. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a couple of questions for you, Christina. Thank you so much for the presentation. It was really helpful. The last slide where it does give that bullet of the other scenarios, do we have a number of what, like for the salary, what the salary would be? Because it says half. Because I'm just, people are putting out there, you know, people under 75. I would love to see what the actual salaries because my suspicion is might actually be less than $75,000 for half the sal, half our salary. So that's just one question. And then
And I don't, I don't think we did the calculation like that. We just, you know.
Yeah. If it's possible to see that calculation, that would be really helpful. I, a couple of other questions that I had. So I'm just going to shoot out my understanding and folks can say it. We're clearly not on consensus. We have the authority to suspend the rules. We have the authority to suspend the rules because we have actual ordinance language in front of us. I'm going to put you on the spot here in just a second. We have the authority to sus- suspend the rules today. We can make a motion, we could pass this today, and everybody knows what they're going to get. How quickly would that money show up in workers' paychecks? If we suspended the votes, if we could get there? I don't think we can get there, I'm just curious. How quickly would it show up in people's paychecks?
Yeah, and I'm going to, I may have to rely on some help from the city manager because it's, it's, that, that is not a question that the, the budget department. We would, we would out, you know, we would obviously appropriate the money, but how quickly it could get into an employee's paycheck.
So we do have, as I mentioned, we have about 2,600 employees. They get paid every two weeks. And we do a payroll every two weeks. So in the case of a one-time bonus, it is just an add to base pay. And it's one time. And we have our human resources department is working on whatever the amount comes up to be, the ability to add it to the next payroll that we can feasibly add it to. So we have, you know, we, we, we don't want to commit to exactly which one because we don't know exactly when it's going to be approved or for what amount and for what group of employees. But I can say that it is, it is not an individual personnel action for everyone because it is a flat amount. But it does have to be, it has to be added to over 2,000 employees or whatever the number of employees is. But it could be at a very, you know.
Would it be fair to say, if we just followed the recommendations that are presented, the tiered bonuses today, we suspended the rules right now, would it be fair to say that the likelihood of that bonus showing up in either the October 5th or 6th, depending on your bank, or the 19th or 20th is, is likely?
I think it's likely. I think, I think that would be likely, yes.
Okay, so to me, there's two questions in front of us as a council. We can, which I hear that y'all are unhappy, heard. It's been real clear that y'all are unhappy. I went to see y'all the first day that you walked out. I'm not going to use the, the other word because technically we're not allowed to. And, you know, I asked a few of you when I spoke with you, I was like, you know, we have a very open, transparent budget process. We actually feed folks who come to our budget process. You, you come and you hang out, you get breakfast and you get lunch. And there's at least two, sometimes more in person. This was our first year return in person post-COVID. And I don't remember who the gentleman was, and even if I did, I wouldn't state his name. He said, well, we weren't ready, which made complete sense to me, that y'all all weren't on the same page, heard. It seems like y'all are getting to the point where you are ready. The problem is that our, our process and y'all's demands aren't necessarily lined up. And that's not because, and, and every single person on this dais, for years, quite frankly, has, we have been a leader in North Carolina around employee pay. I understand that we are behind. I know y'all are looking at other cities. All of that is deeply understood, and we've got to do better. Again, I think every single person on this dais, the manager, everyone, wants to do better. But we are in the middle of a thing where we can't raise pay. What we can do right now is give you a bonus. We can table this conversation and we can, you know, argue some more about money, get some more information, or we can suspend the rules and give you all a bonus that's going to show up in October. Those are, to me, those are the kind of two straightforward decisions that are in front of this council. And so if there's consensus to move forward today and suspend the rules, I will definitely vote for it. If there's also folks who are like, no, let's see if we can figure out this money better, that's great. But y'all are going to be waiting for your money for longer. That, that's the real outcome here. Thank you.
I think that we have Councilwoman Jose Hyman. But I will say that we also have Ms. Karen Alexander, who would like to speak to us on this issue. Does anybody have any objection to that? Come on, Ms. Alexander, let you go next.
Good afternoon, everyone. As a finance person, I have waited for this part of seeing the presentation. I didn't say yes, I didn't say no, because I needed to know where the money was coming from. As a taxpaying citizens too who own homes, your only revenue is from homeowners, us. So what you're doing is you're pitting homeowners who can barely keep up against our salaried employees. That is unfair, very unfair to homeowners. Now, the problem I'm having is, and no one seemed to have answered my question is, have you received a raise since 2019? No? Yes, you have. Okay, then as city and state employees, which I have been one of, you have to accept what we get because we're based upon taxpayers. And I also thought about, well, I don't remember none of y'all coming to the meetings before the budget, because just somebody, somebody doesn't come, don't mean that our bean counters, me, is not paying attention to who's coming, who's doing what, when, and why. I'm listening, I'm paying attention, okay? But as a taxpayer, how many of you own homes? Every time, so you're raising and you're fighting for a raise from your own money, because when they give you the raise, they're going to raise the taxes on the homeowners. They haven't. And that's been one of the problems. They have not raised the money. But I'm also concerned about the city council. My understanding is you gave yourself raises. And so if you gave yourself raises, you didn't look out for the little people either. And that's the problem too. So no, nobody is right in this situation, nobody. But who's going to foot the bill? We taxpayers. Why? Because they entitled to a, a salary that's livable. I agree with them, they're entitled to. As a state employee, I never lived with a living salary. They paid us, they get to the budget, and they say you get 2% up, we're not getting you anything. That's what happens with city and state employees. You accept it, you go, and you keep moving on. But if you gave yourself a raise, then you were wrong. You were wrong. And I don't remember that in the budget of where, was there budget money to give yourself So therefore, I'm not happy with none of this. And I sat here and I waited, I waited, I waited because I wanted to see the numbers. And I'm still not satisfied with the numbers that were shown to me. I want to know where the revenue money is coming from the taxpayers. I want to know how it's spent, when it was spent, and those are the things I'm not seeing on the webpage or anywhere else.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander.
Where do I go to get that information?
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. I think Councilwoman Jose Hyman was first. Oh, okay. I did want to say that as, as far as the motion to suspend the rules, I would, I would be willing to be supportive of that. But I still want to make sure, I, I'm not in agreement with the numbers that have been proposed. I, I am still in agreement with the $5,000 as a bonus. And even if we have to phase it, give them 3,000 now with the promise to come back for the other two, because I know people would not mind as long as they got it, if you got it in two parts. So we could get it in two parts and also the consideration of that step. I don't think that we just, it keeps compounding if you don't deal with that issue that brought us here in the beginning. And we're going to have to deal with that or it's never going to go away. And I don't think that it's fair to ask them to wait for another pay study. So I will be willing to go along with that so long as the $5,000 still stands. We try to do it in parts. I'm also in agreement with those who have, who are, who, as a part of that consideration, that we do give it to our, to persons who are making 75,000 or less and hold on until we get further numbers for the, for those others. That is not an unusual circumstance, working in government. They did a lot when I was on the bench. People got bonuses if you made some money, you didn't get a bonus. Sometimes you need to be all right with that, especially if you're making six figures. So that's a part of that. So I think that there is a way we can fashion it to make sure that we walk out of here today with some relief that these people can get in October. But I do think we can find a way to get at least what they've asked on that $5,000 bonus. So that's where I'm.
I can go now. So my, one of the questions before I make my other statement is, I want to know, where is the money that we save for not paying some of the, like, we have a lot of openings. So where is that money? Where, where's that money?
So salaries are budgeted, they're part of the ordinance. If we get to June 30th and we have salaries that did not go to employees, it goes to fund balance. That is what we're talking about today. It goes to fund balance. When it goes to fund balance, it goes to savings. That is what we are here to ask be applied to new obligations, new expenses. That's where it goes.
So the other thing is, and, and I'm going to say this, I've been really quiet and, not to take away what we're talking about, but I, I can't, I can't stay quiet anymore. You know, Mayor Protem, I've had a lot of respect for you. And I have sat here over the last seven months, and I've just watched the way that you, you'll say something good, then you kind of come back for me. And I've been quiet. But what I'm going to ask you to do is to continue, to stop saying that something that I say is not true. Because clearly, over the seven months, somebody higher than you, an FBI and an SBI have said that I have integrity. And I'm going to continue to, and, and I cannot say all that I want to say because everybody on this council is going to have to answer to a higher being very, very soon, not just there, but somebody else. So please, I'm going to ask you to continue, you know, you can have your commentary. I've tried to have the respect for you. I've tried to not go where I'm going, but I've had too much clammed up. But I'm going to ask you to stop saying every time I say something that it's a lie. Because for months, I had to deal with the lies that you all were saying, okay? So I'm going to ask you to stop saying that. You give me a, oh, I thank you, Dr. Hyman, and you're doing every, and then you come back with a dig, and I'm tired of it. I'm tired of it. So I'm going to ask you with all decency to stop doing that. Because you think that it, it's a lie, but it's not a lie. And clearly, that's people have said that I'm not a liar and I have integrity. And I'm going to ask you to stop it. I've been holding it, I've been trying to be, you know, everybody says, Dr. Hyman, you've been holding, but I'm tired of it. So I'm going to ask you to stop that, okay? The other thing is, I am in agreement with the mayor. I would like to see the $5,000. I would like to see your steps. And like she said, even if it's in two inch, in, in circles. Let's get it done, let's stop the back and forth, and let's make it happen. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I might, since I was directly responded, I was directly called out, I was directly called out. I was directly called out.
Yeah, I would really like a chance.
Councilmember Hyman, can I, I was direct, I was directly called out. I was directly called out. I was directly called out, Madam Mayor. I would like a response to respond.
No, you will not at this time. Council, Councilwoman Johnson has been holding her hand patiently. She has the floor, followed by Councilwoman Williams. We're not going to have a back and forth.
I'm not going to be called a liar at this dais.
Thank.
Just chill right there for a second.
Thank you.
Her have the floor, followed by Councilwoman Williams, and we're going to do it in that order.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I feel like some of these conversations we could have offline. I want to respect y'all's time, I want to respect our time. First, I just want to appreciate y'all's advocacy. I've been, you know, working with unions for a long time, and it's just been really great to see so many new people get involved in a labor struggle here in Durham. There are a lot of labor, labor struggles here in our community. We have a Workers' Rights Commission now. We have, you know, lots of folks who have been organizing around these issues for a long time. And I hope that everybody who has gotten involved will stay involved and will continue to advance the cause of the labor movement here in Durham. Of course, we're, you know, in a state where workers, especially public workers, aren't given the true, you know, rights that y'all deserve in terms of being able to collectively bargain and negotiate. But we can still, unions here can still do a lot. And I think that it is great for people to see that unions here can still do a lot. And I hope that this struggle advances the cause of labor in Durham overall because it's an important struggle and it's important for everybody to be engaged and understand the labor movement. With regard to this particular issue, I'm going to try to focus on where we are right now and what we can do right now. And I'm happy to continue to meet with y'all offline. You know, when I'm invited to meet with y'all, I show up. I'm happy to continue to have conversations. But right now, I feel like we need to move towards making some decisions. And I want to just stay focused on like some clearer lines of decision-making that we need to make. And I hope that I've been clear about my position on, on these spending issues. But just in case, I want to reiterate a couple of things. So when I go out to spend money, right, there's two important things I need to know. I need to know how much something is going to cost, and I need to know how much money I have. And that's really all that we're trying to do here. We're trying to figure out how much stuff is going to cost and how much money we have. We still don't know how much fair pay is going to cost. That's what, that's what a, a pay study is for, to actually see what y'all should be paid so that we can match that. We do know now how much money we have with regard to bonuses and that amount. The, the amount that we can spend on bonuses without jeopardizing the city's ability to take on debt at the lowest rate that we possibly can, which pays for all, you know, things like our big affordable housing spending plan, right, that we're trying to do now. That requires us to take out debt, and we're trying to take out debt at the lowest possible rate. We know we need another housing bond, we need an infrastructure bond, we need to keep that AAA bond rating if we can. And the amount that we can spend on bonuses, given that, is $6.5 million, all right? That's what's in the budget for bonuses for staff. And I want to also just take a minute to thank our city staff, our budget staff, our finance staff, and our city manager for working really hard to get us these numbers ahead of their original schedule. Because, because of the urgency in the community of getting this issue settled and because y'all have been, I think, very clear about needing to get money into your pocket as soon as possible. So we've got $6.5 million, okay? I'm not willing to spend more than that because I don't think it's financially responsible to put the city's entire financial status at risk. I am willing to rearrange that $6.5 million in any way that we can agree makes sense in order to advance the equity goal more directly. So right now, we have lowest-paid workers getting 3,000, highest-paid workers getting 2. I'm, I'm not going to not give the highest-paid workers anything. I don't think that that, I think that that sends a wrong, the wrong signal. And I don't want to, you know, build up morale in one part of the workforce by destroying it in another part, right? I want everybody to get something. I also think the equity that we have had in previous bonuses by having tiered bonuses, where the folks who make less money get more and the folks who make the least money, sorry, make the most money get less, makes sense. So with that $6.5 million, I am very willing to look at, at calculations that will result in folks like y'all at the bottom of the wage scale getting more money and the people at the top of the wage scale getting less money. What's tricky about that is that we then need our staff to calculate those alternative scenarios so that we know how much it's going to cost and that it's going to stay within that factor. Like if we want folks at the very bottom to get $5,000 each, we need to know, and say we cut the bonus at the top to 1,000, right, or even 500, we need, we need staff to figure out at what, at what cutoff that can be in order to allocate that $6.5 million. And it can't be 75,000 because that's 1,700 workers. And, and I just, you know, 1,700 workers times a $5,000 bonus times, you know, the amount of money that we have to add on top of the bonus to cover retirement taxes, right? It's going to be more like $10 million than six. So if we want folks to get 5,000, it's going to be a smaller chunk of workers. If we are okay with folks getting three, then it can be, go to more people. So like, these are the things that we've got to figure out. And I'm happy to figure out whatever folks think is fair. What I'm, what I'm not willing to do is go beyond what the staff says we have to spend because that jeopardizes the financial future for the entire city, not just our workers, but like our entire community depends on being able to borrow money in order to put all of our projects on the ground. Our parks, our roads, our affordable housing plan, all depends on that, on being able to borrow that money. And I'm not going to be responsible for jeopardizing that. And I don't think it's a great headline, right, that, that any of us here in this room right now, having this conversation, is responsible for killing the bond rating that the city has worked so hard to get over the last several of years. So again, what I'm willing to work with y'all on is how we distribute that $6.5 million. And if y'all want to come with a proposal that gets folks $5,000 at the bottom of the scale and keeps us within $6.5 million, I'm very happy to consider that. But I, as long as we give something to folks at the top too, not nothing. It doesn't have to be a lot, but something that recognizes that they also are committed to doing work for the city and that we recognize their work and efforts. Thanks.
Councilwoman Williams?
Actually, Councilmember Johnson just said what I was.
Actually, Councilmember Johnson just said what I was going to say. I think, I, I think that we can, I, I know we can get to it. But what I won't do is, as I've said over and over and over, I won't be financially or fiscally irresponsible. But I will be committed to making sure that we get, we get something there. And if the, if the idea is to make sure people who make the lowest amount get more, I'm all for it. I'm all for it. You know, I, I started teaching in 2006. It was in 2008 when we started dealing with our compression issues. And I ended up leaving the classroom before we got it. It was like six years, five, six years later. So I know how all of that works. I think what's a little frustrating about this is there's a lot of symbolic solidarity. There, there's a, you know, many of us have been doing this work for a long time. And what I, and I wasn't going to say it earlier, and I, and I still won't name them. But, you know, one of the first questions I asked was, what the heck happened? How did we get here with the stand down before even having the conversations? You know, and what I was told was, we couldn't even get enough people together to organize the request. Okay. But we saw the firefighters, and we got motivated. So, okay, that's cool, that's fine. So now we're here. And the conversation that I want to be able to have is directly with our city employees. And the voices that I want to hear directly is our city employees, employees, especially the ones who are city employees and residents, because it gets, we, I get to hear your real experience. And you're, and why you're requesting what you're requesting. But you also have to be careful of who puts the crown on your head. People who've never really cared about you before, now all of a sudden standing next to you. So I, I want to be able to have this conversation. But please don't be a vessel for somebody who don't really care. Now, that's the other thing, that's one thing. The other thing is, I, I had a few questions. And I think, Madam Manager, you or Mr. Rudden can help me out with this. I know that raise for council, this has come up a lot. And oftentimes, we have these conversations without really fully, fully talking about the information. So how much, first of all, when did council receive a raise? And how much did, how much did that cost?
I hate to rely on my memory, but...
So, okay, so oftentimes...
But it was, it was, yeah, it would, but a raise, a raise for council is significantly less than a raise for...
Absolutely. A lot of times I ask questions...
Which I can get you.
A lot of times I ask questions that I sort of, sort of know the answer to. The, the raise happened right before Mayor O'Neill and I got on council. And I believe it was about $10,000 per person, or something around that. And it's seven council members.
Let me speak. So the, the compensation for, for city council members is required to be adopted by the governing board. That is, that is a requirement. There was a discussion, I'm going to say at least three, three years ago, about tying that compensation to the city's livable wage.
Yep.
And that is what actually happened. So the dollar raises were raises that got the council members and mayor from the current amount that they had to...
To the living wage.
An amount that was tied to a livable wage. So that is what, and it's been about three years ago.
Thank you. So do we have, do we have... Right. So are there any city employees that make less than council members?
Not full-time employees.
Right. And council members make a living wage now because of that raise that happened three years ago?
Yes, it is, it is, it is tied to that, yes.
Okay. So what I'm trying to do is get us to the fact, to the facts, all right? Have we received, oh, the other thing, when it comes to a market study, are market studies comprehensive, or are they where the market is at that time?
So what we're doing is a, is a classification and compensation study that market for a particular position or positions is, is included in that study. So the goal is that all of the jobs that we have in city government get a, an analysis as to whether or not those jobs are aligned with the market for the, the work that is being done in that position. And so we compare that to similar, similar organizations, similarly sized organizations that are, you know, that do the same kinds of work that we do. And we also include some private sector positions for jobs that are, you know, certainly transferable into the, into the private sector. But ultimately, we have a recommendation on, on a, a market range for our jobs. We look in at the current salaries that our employees are making, and we make a recommendation to get them as close to that market number as we can get with the funding that we have available.
Thank you. Has... Again, I'm going to ask some questions, just so we can have real factual information on the record. Last year, did our general employees get raises?
Yes, sir.
How much was that raise?
So last fiscal year, the raises were a range from 7% to, to 9%. 7% to 9%. And this fiscal year is 6% to 8%. Those are the raises.
All right, and... Can we...
Wait for a second. Let, let, Manager, if you would clarify, who, who got the raises was, when you say general employees? How does that turn out?
So any non, non-public safety employee. In our budget last year, there was a 3% adjustment to the, to the pay scale, and everybody got that 3% included in their check. And then there was the 4% that is part of the plan, the general pay plan. So 3 plus 4 is 7, and that is a 7%. That was in the last budget year, the budget year that ended. The year that we are, that this budget year that we've just started, that amount is 2% plus 4% for general employees, which is 6, 6%.
Got you. All right.
So...
Thank you, thank you for that. And I, no one else is going to say it, guys. We really want to get through this conversation so we can make some things happen, okay? All right, so I'm, I'm going to personally ask for you to be a bit more respectful, so we can get through the conversation, please. Okay? So what, what will... Well, going back to that question real quick, and also, fire and police, did they get an increase?
Yes, in the, in the public safety, in fire and police, their pay plan increase, annual increase is 5%. So the 2% plus the 5%, in general, those employees receive 7%.
All right. And what are we doing in regards to, like, what type of bonuses are we doing right now for first responders to come on? Like, or any type, not necessarily bonus, but are we doing any type of incentives, recruitment incentives?
So I'm going to bring Deputy Manager Bo Ferguson up. He typically keeps that top of mind.
Good afternoon. Bo Ferguson, Deputy City Manager for Public Safety. In the Police Department, there is a recruitment bonus of $10,000 that can be paid if, over time, as, as recruits go through the process. The only other recruitment incentives we have right now are in the 911 Center for Master Communication Officers. That is, I believe, it maxes out at $3,000 for qualified master communication officers.
Good. So why are you there? How much is a first-year police officer, how much does a first-year police officer, no experience, make when they first start in Durham?
At the police officer level or at the recruit level?
At the police officer level.
I'd like to pull that up and, and get that for you and answer it before I do it off the top of my head.
Okay, and the reason why I'm asking, because I'm, I'm, so, let me clarify. If it's the recruit level, is that someone that we bring laterally from elsewhere?
No, recruit is someone who is not yet a sworn police officer. That is someone who is recruited into the department.
Right, and they would, you, we can recruit them for about $10,000?
The, the $10,000 is the, is the, basically a signing bonus that gets paid in two installments when they get through certain benchmarks in the academy.
On top of the base pay?
On top of base pay, correct.
Okay. Madam Manager, what happens if we were to give every employee in the city $5,000 right now? What, what would be the financial condition of the city?
So the number that was in the, the slide presentation today that Christina made, that would be approximately $14.4 million or something of that sort. So you see, half at $5,000 was 7.2, so that was, we just doubled that.
All right.
So...
And are we, when it comes to pay, where do we stand in regards of our neighboring triangle cities? All right, let me be a little more specific, since we're talking sanitation workers, there's solid waste. Where are we standing in, in regards to other neighboring cities?
So part of our market study would be to establish that. I did actually, you know, see some, some information from the media that was just really a couple of cities. But we, we do not have a full market study. But in terms of the neighboring cities that were placed there, we were, we were with, we were above in, in our driver and a little below in our collector position.
Sounds good. So for the record, for... So, so for, for the record, we are... We're going to give bonuses. I think we have to figure out who gets what amount. We're going to give bonuses, we're going to have a pay study that's going to give us a raise. And the best thing we can do is know what we're talking about, because if we don't, we could really, really, really hurt ourselves as a city financially. And someone said the other day, they said, "We don't need a pay study. Durham should be smarter than everyone else." And that is why I ask some of these questions, because I want to be able to break it down. Just like we're using the terminology, you know, fund balance. In other words, how much money we have in the bank? Is that right?
Essentially, it's our, yes, savings.
When we talk about, you know, the, the plan, you know, we're, we're talking, when we talk about the plan, we're talking about how, how much that position gets paid at that level. So sometimes we utilize terminology that's not what we use in the, in the everyday life. So I'd like to ask some of these questions, just so we can, like, bring the conversation to just everyday use. And so what I got from this is, folks are getting paid, we're going to pay more, we're going to do a one-time bonus, and then we're going to do a pay study that let us know where the market is right now, because things have gotten a lot more expensive. So when we do this pay study, we're going to get a lot more money. We're going to have to pay a lot more money, which also means, to the earlier point, taxes, we're going to be paying a lot more in taxes, too. But that's the, that's where we are. And we can also cut spending to save it. But the more we take away from what we can carry over, the less cushion we have. And the less cushion we have, that means the more direct pay we're going to have to pay. So if you own a home, I'm sorry, because it's about to hurt. And that, and that's where, that's what we're getting to. So I just, I just wanted to just kind of help me, as well as others who may be listening, understand where we are. And do know, we're going to figure it out. We're going to figure it out.
I have a question for you, Manager. The money, the $6.5 million, that will come out of what part of money?
So the number that is showing 6,583, 693, that would be all of the bonus, bonuses for all of employees that work in all depart, all departments and all funds from the fund balance?
From the fund balance.
Fund balance.
How much money do we have over the fund balance? Where we need to keep it at the 16.7, what's that total amount? Just trying to clarify that in my own head.
So...
Yeah.
The, the fund bal, the year that we're currently in is the fiscal year that started July 1st of 2023. It's going to end June 30th of 2024. We have an adopted budget that we adopted on June 20th for that. That with, with that budget and the projection for what you see in the ordinance today, that we would have a new budget, a new amount, and we would have used, out of the general fund, approximately 8 point, I think Christina's got a calculator, 8.3 million dollars of our unassigned fund balance that we had not already allocated previously.
Okay. So Councilwoman Johnson's suggestion is a good starting point for us to try to move forward with something today. Okay, so she said she would be willing to agree that we allocate this 6.5. It sounds like we still have, if I just heard you correctly, will have some in the fund balance left over that we could possibly use for bonuses. Trying to just get to the bonus part before we get to the step part.
So everything that we're talking about today is bonuses.
Right.
Everything we're talking about today is bonuses.
Right.
And any, what we have included in this proposal, we are projecting what would happen during this year that we're in. And that would allow us to stay at about 24.71% of an unallocated fund balance by the time we get to the end of the year. But it's all about, it is all about bonuses. Bonuses are one, bonuses are the only thing that we can actually pay out of...
Right.
One-time money.
So I'm still back at how we can get some relief today along with getting the numbers that we'll need to get us the monies that would need to adjust the, for the step, as well as making sure that the bonuses that we give are going to be adequate for us to leave today. So we have the city manager's recommendations. I'm still at, as I indicated, at the $5,000 that they have requested, because we don't know what those numbers would look like for a step or, and that at least shows good faith on our parts to make sure that we move expeditiously on this study. And how do we get to making sure, and I'm in agreement with Councilwoman Johnson in terms of trying to make sure that folk get something, which might be that $300. I can, I can live with the $300 until we can get some more numbers for the higher wage earners. But I do think that for those that have come before us, that we need to make sure that we leave out of here with the, with relief that says 5,000, even if it's split into two payments while we're giving money. So we do 2,500 now. $2,500, we'll let you all look at some numbers and see if we can come back and do another 2,500 with the higher wage earners being at the $300 bonus, if that makes sense.
So, so what I would really like... So what I would really like to stress today is, and I have, you know, I've been very, very clear. We bring recommendations and we take the direction of council in terms of providing you information that you need in order to make good decisions. The recommendation that you have today, if you look at the numbers that are there, there are numbers that have been calculated based upon the people who are currently here, their salaries, the funds that they work in. And that is why you see the numbers that you see here. Any change to this cannot be calculated or done today. It cannot be... There is nothing about any of the changes that anyone here is talking about that can be done today. None of it. So if there are changes, there will not be... There would not be a decision that is made today, because you don't have a way to make that. You don't have an ordinance to approve. And that is what this is. It's a budget amendment. So it can't be done... It cannot be done today. It just can't be done today.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
All right. That's why earlier I was saying we can suspend the rules and vote on what's in front of us or we will have to table the conversation and let staff adjust whatever numbers. We may want to change or not change.
Madam, may I ask a question about your plan? The... Is it... So when you say the 5,000, are you still on 5,000 for under 75 for folk earning under 75,000 or 5 grand for everybody? What is your vision on the 5,000, if I may ask?
I want to break the city, so I know 5,000 to everybody is not really feasible, right? So I'm thinking $5,000 for those as requested by our workers, for those under 75,000, right? Not just for today. And then we come back and ask for more numbers.
And then 300 for everybody else above 75,000?
And we come back with more numbers. Because we know we have 6.5 that we can pretty much kind of allocate some of that today, right? We don't have to use it all. But we make a good faith showing to allocate at least part of that. And I know we can do math on the fly. But we know that part of that, we can make sure that those under 75,000, they get a total of 5,000. Right. They don't necessarily get it today. If we can agree, we can get it at the 3,000. The other folk, we set it at 300 and use that amount of money with the fact that we come back, let them rerun their monies to figure out where we're going to pull the 2,000 at a later date, after we run some more monies. So that we don't use the whole 6,500 now. Y'all follow? We don't want to use the whole, just... We need to make a good faith effort. Help me, because I'm trying to start from where you say you are.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
If I... I'm sorry. Can I just... Because if we... I mean, I'm intrigued when you say maybe the... It sounded like layaway. 2,500 now. And then 2,500... Yeah. It sounded like layaway. Sounded like layaway. If there's a way we could... I mean, I would be open to looking at, if we can, an incremental way to not compromise the city's financial position, which is what we've been talking about. And if folk are willing to negotiate and talk about some type of, you know, staggered incremental thing. I'd be open to looking at that. I just want to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What... I'm not clear about the timeline for a year later, because I think the 6.5 million is all we have for this fiscal year. So are you talking about next fiscal year, we would do an additional bonus?
I'm willing to... I'm open to that. I'm just trying to start from where you were with the... You said, okay, we have 6.5 million, right? We know we have a number of people that have requested that we look at the 5,000, right? So if you bifurcate that along with your saying that you would like to be able to give the upper wage earners something, so we give them a $300 bonus out of this 6.5. Plus, we do at least a 2,000 or 3,000 bonus for those less. We come back and we see how much we have to add to what's remaining to get us to the 5,000.
I guess that's the part where I get stuck, is that...
Where do we get it from?
Where do we get it from this year?
I think that's why we got to look at some numbers before we decide where it comes from. But they will have the promise that that's coming.
And that's another thing, is that we can't make a promise for a future city council. So we can't promise, we can't say, "We'll give you 2,500 now and we'll give you 2,500 next year," because we aren't the group of people who's going to be voting on the budget for next year. We could afford to give everybody under $75,000 a $2,500 bonus. That would be under the 6.5. But we can't guarantee them more later. That's actually... I mean, that's less than the city manager's recommendation for those folks.
But I'm saying, I still want us to try to get there. If we can also, like we said, we're going to have to do an amendment. If we can also, during that time, figure out where else we might be able to capture some savings so that we can get to that $2,500 in this fiscal year. They're going to have to go back and run some more numbers. But I think there may be a number of places where we can try to capture some of that so that we can have us there. Now, you all know more about the numbers than I do.
I just don't... I don't want to pretend there's magic money out there.
No, it's not.
For folks, they're... Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. I want to make sure that we leave some of this 6.5 so that we will have... Be able to allocate that to make sure that we can finish what they've asked of us in this fiscal year.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, we know approximately how many employees make less than 75,000 and we know what a $2,500 bonus will cost the city.
Right.
And that is within the range of what the manager has said is safe for us to spend without damaging our financial status. It's... We won't have an exact number, but I think we'll have it close. Would you agree, Madam Manager, that it's close to what... That the number of employees that you said make under... I think it was under 79, not 75, but that was the number that you had, times that bonus amount? That would keep us in the range that we need to be in in order to not overspend and jeopardize the bond rating?
So there's about 1,700 employees that would get the bonus. That would be 17...
1,700, okay.
Yes, 17. But we did not.
Yeah. And it's further complicated by the fact that they're across different funds. So we would have to know what fund they... Folks were falling into with their salary. And so what you're voting on is an ordinance for each... You know, the ordinance includes all the individual funds. So to be able to do it today is impossible. You can only really do what we've calculated today. Now, we can go back and calculate that, but we cannot tell you what an ordinance would look like today, which is what you would need to vote on.
Okay. But we could ask you to come back with ordinances with... Like, we could give you a direction to then come back with an ordinance that would do these things. And then you could come to our... Okay.
Yeah. But you... Yeah. If you were...
We can't... Yeah.
You could vote on something you don't have in front of you.
We can't vote on the ordinances, I understand. But we could, like, express the intention to move forward with that.
Councilwoman Freeman? Thank you. What it seems like there's consensus on, from what I have heard, is that it's 6. whatever million. It seems like that is the total amount of money. And what our ask is, is there a way to get the folks who are at the 3,000 tier up and a way to bring the 2,000 tier down? It may not get folks to 5, right? But it will get them closer and it would bring back the tier that's making 2,000. I guess it's over 90. So I think that's what I'm hearing, folks, that they're interested in that. And I understand that for staff, it would take doing all this again. And I wanted to suspend the rules and vote on it today, because I thought, you know, it seemed like there was a lot of urgency from our workers and I wanted to get money as quickly as possible into their bank accounts. I also understand that they are hoping they get more money. So that's going to take more time. It's kind of this. If you want money in October, it's the plan in front of you, because that's the ordinance language. That's the legal language we have in front of us. If you would like to hope, you know, some are going to get more, closer to 4, maybe not everyone's going to get 5, then that is not a decision we're going to be able to make today. And staff's going to have to go back around and it's going to be at least another agenda cycle, which means that money is not going to show up in your paycheck. And October is going to show up in your paycheck at the earliest November. So those are the realities right now.
Councilwoman Freeman?
Thank you. I would just ask, what would it look like if we were to move forward with today, the bonus recommendations? And to find, I guess, some savings to cover the under 75,000 and an additional 2,000? So the only thing you would need to go back and look at would be to figure out if there was 2,000 for the 1,700 workers, which comes out to... Hold on one second. It's 3.4 million plus the 25% is 850,000. So that would be 4.9... Hold on. It's about 4.9?
It's okay. I just don't want to... To the point, I think the thing is that it's straight numbers, but it comes from different funds. So the reason that there is a discrepancy on one of the slides from the fourth, that 4 million plus to the 6 million, is because that's from the general fund, but not all of the workers who are going to get a bonus. Is it coming from the general fund? We have to think about the folks who, part of it, a percentage of it, is going to come from transportation, because that's its own fund. Part of it's going to be the folks who work in water, right? So I think that's part of the tricky part, which is why, thank you, staff, because I didn't go to school for this. And so I think that that's, again, the conundrum we're in. If we want to do something different than the language that is presented to us today, we have to table the conversation. If folks want to get the money in people's paychecks, then we accept what is in front of us. And those are the two options. We can haggle more, but those are essentially the two options, because staff has to come back and route all of those numbers in the proper funds so that we can get a full picture. Thank you.
So if I could just wrap that up, I think that that would be moving forward with that today and then asking staff to go back and look at finding that 4.9 million. So essentially, it would be asking staff to go back and look at the budget and see if there's savings that could be used, whether it's in whatever fund, regarding water, transportation, whichever one it is. And then also moving forward with the current recommendation.
So as it relates to savings, you know, we come every quarter to give projections. And those projections, you know, represent what we've already spent and what we expect to spend for the rest of the year. If any time that we, you know, we make a change to something that already has been authorized, if we're going to recognize savings within a year, then we actually have to cut that off so that it doesn't get spent and have it moved to another place. And so that is... I mean, the city is mostly salaries. That's where most of our budget is. We do not have a lot of places to cover other... Cut over... Cut other things.
Would it be possible to come back with that in the next quarter? Because this is September, so that would be December. Would it be possible to come back with it by then?
So you're asking that we come back at the end of the second quarter to tell you?
If there's savings enough.
But I think to the city manager's point is we would have to cut those expenditures to assure there were savings. And so that would mean, if... And the majority of our budget is personnel, so that would mean cutting personnel or positions at that point.
Or it could be freezing.
Freezing positions, something like that. Yeah, something like that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yeah. Councilmember Freeman, are you asking to go forward with what we have today and then add an additional four, something, find an additional four something, which will ultimately equal about 10 million?
It would, but it would be based on... It wouldn't be... It would be allocations. It's not actual dollars, is what I'm saying. Is that if you can find 4 million in savings, you're not moving any money. You're not taking any money from anywhere else. You're moving it out from savings.
Okay. So again, Madam, yeah, I was about to ask you...
So all of the savings that we have to use, it already currently exists. So it is what you have, what we have here from previous years is already known. What you're talking about, I believe, is savings in the current year. And the only way that we actually get savings in the current year is we identify things that can be stopped, haven't already been spent, you know. And it's mostly, you know, that's mostly positions, which would mean if we're going to reallocate something that's in the adopted budget from one place to another, we have to cut it off from the place that it is so that it can be used for the other purpose. And most of what we have is salaries across our organization. We do have operational, you know, costs, but it's not significant. So we would have to find what we're going to freeze and not spend it, which means if we don't recruit for it or we don't, you know, enter into a contract for it, that is the only way that we actually find money in the current budget to bring to you to spend for another purpose. Because once you allocate something to a bonus, you are going to spend that. It's not going to be something that you may spend or you may not spend. You are going to... It will be spent. And even to put this in the budget, these bonuses proposed, we are already assuming we're going to have a positive budget variance of $10 million. That is a... We're basically already saying we're either going to have five more, you know, have more revenue come in than we budgeted or spend less. But we're not identifying where that is. If we specifically say we're going to use it for something and put it in the ordinance, then we're going to have to take it from someplace. It's not magic. It can't just happen.
And I think that's why I'm saying, you know, by the end of the quarter, because you know there are third and fourth quarter expenses that have not been expended yet.
So just to finish my comment, I, again, I'm not interested in going over the 6.5 right now. I'm interested in... I'll be open to finagle, you know, shaping some things around. But I'm not going to put us in financial straits to where we can't respond to natural disasters or we're taken away from, you know, the cushion that's going to happen next year. So I think, you know, and I'll make the motion, you know, but we either take what we have today and we take this today and pass it, then October 1st or the beginning of October, the first paycheck, people are going to start sending money in their pocket. If we don't, then it's going to take time to go back and work the numbers. I sucked in math. Math didn't make sense to me in college until statistics. I'm not going to calculate in real time with very limited information. So I'm willing to go along with setting policy to get people more money. But I, again, I'm going to do it the fiscally responsible way. Thank you.
So what I'm hearing now is either we accept this recommendation or we have to send you all back to the drawing board to rework these numbers. So for instance, you know, and this is my naivety about how this process works, we could not say we want to move forth on the 3,000 and then for those ones who are making 57,000, that's where you have it right here, below 57,000, come back and rework the remainder of those recommendations at another time. We could not do that today. We will have to ask you all today is to go back and rework the numbers in its entirety. You cannot bifurcate it. We either have to accept... We either have to accept all this as it is now or not accept it.
Yeah, because you would need a different, you'd need a different amendment and I would have to calculate what, what the, what the three thousand for, even the fifty-seven thousand and below, I would need, you know, that's a total number. It's not broken out.
Yeah. So I'm trying to, because see, I know, we, we all got to try to understand. So it's either this today, which I'm not really feeling, or we ask you all to come back and work some numbers. It's where we are.
And, and, and the numbers that we come back with, they have to be specific direction for us to work, work on the numbers. Otherwise, we, we're not going to know what you want us to do.
So like I said, for, for, for me, it will be the six point five lowering the other three categories to try the other, at least the other three categories to raise up closer to the five thousand mark. So instead of the part-time being people getting a thousand, the people over ninety thousand getting two thousand, the people over fifty-seven thousand to ninety getting twenty-five hundred, those numbers would come down and then I would want to see where the break really should come on those numbers that we talked about, maybe the seventy-five or sixty-five, so that we get closer to the five thousand dollar request for those lower, lower earners and then the, the bonuses for the higher folk would get down to more, more like the three hundred. And we still stay within that six point five million. We stay within that number, but just readjust the categories. Which gets us closer, yeah, I think three hundred dollars was already in the budget.
Three hundred, three hundred dollars per person is already in the bu, budget, but as we expressed, these numbers include the three hundred. So the numbers that, the new money that we need is less by the almost seven hundred thousand dollars that's in this year's budget for the three hundred. Otherwise, this number here would be bigger. The number you're looking at would be bigger by about three quarter, about seven hundred and some thousand.
Yeah, you have, you have already appropriated the three hundred dollars in the budget that you passed on June thirtieth.
So I, I think we're all clear that we don't want to go over the six point five at this point. Are we, do we have some kind of thumbs up for that? We're going to try to stay there. The question is, how we allocate that? And that's, I am not really happy with the, the numbers that I'm seeing here. I would like that, what, some adjustments on that.
I, I think that there's one number that we have discussed and I, and I think Councilmember Johnson mentioned the number for it. The seventy, we don't have a number in front, we don't have a number for seventy-five thousand or lower. We know that that's seventeen hundred employees from another data set that we had. And if all of those employees, seventy-five or below, that number would be ten million. So it would go over the number you're talking about.
And that's what I'm saying, I want to kind of make the, make the adjustment to stay within that range. We may not get to the five thousand, but for your lower wage earners, they will be closer than the three thousand dollars is recommended. That's all I'm saying, is that you just.
Madam Mayor, I do have one request. I don't want to drop the part-time, they only got five hundred last time. The part-time workers, when we did, when we did bonuses last time, they only got five hundred. So I was actually quite pleased because a lot of those folks work in parks and rec and a lot of those people are, are basically care providers. And as we know, a lot of care providers are undervalued and underpaid in their other jobs, and so I'm not okay with dropping them down below a thousand. So I'm just sharing that.
And I, I don't think anybody would have any, I know I don't have a problem with, with part-timers being at a thousand.
So are we at a point?
I'm more concerned about the higher wage, not the part-time.
I think my biggest concern now is we, we have to set some policy expectation or direction for staff and I'm cautious about recommending this. I don't know if that takes a special work group. No? Okay, all right.
I, I think we just need a clear recommendation. The, the issue you may find is that on the top of the scale, there might be a lower number of employees so that the shift might not be as, that's.
Yeah. So basically the people who are making, let's say a hundred thousand or more, it's, it's not many people.
There might not be as many people at the top, but yeah, I would have to run the numbers to be certain of, of what that.
So it wouldn't have much of an impact?
I, I, no, I cannot, I just, I just.
It's hard to say.
It's hard to say at this point.
But I think what, what it sounds like consensus-wise is we're trying to reweight where this equity lens is falling.
Right.
Madam Mayor, if I might, I, I'm, I'm, I think the, I, I think the staff has brought to us a plan that's informed by our values. They, they know that, we've, we've already talked about equity. The six five eight three, six nine three number is the number and we're trying to operate within that number. I, I, to your point about the steps, I mean, I'm, I'm prepared, whatever the council decides, obviously I'll go with it, but I'm prepared today to vote on this plan and commit that the raise is going to be significant after the, the comp plan, after the comp plan study comes. I think that's where we can really, and to your point about the steps, whatever we think those steps should have represented retroactively, we can try and fix that in this next raise after the comp plan, whatever that may look like. Because if we try and fix it retroactively now, then this six five eight three number I think gets blown up and we've already agreed that we want to stick within that. I'm committed to, to doing a significant raise for our employees after the comp plan. I'm prepared to vote on this today, but if, if the council wants to move forward with tweaking these numbers for and whatever, lower on the top end, but I, I think, I think the staff knew going in what we've talked about. We've talked about equity, something for everybody, something that reflects, you know, the numbers that are there. So I, I'm, I'm satisfied with the work that they've done, given all that, the guidance that they've gotten from us in the past and knowing what our values are as a city. So, because I, I'm interested in folks getting money immediately, but I'm, whatever the council decides, but I'm comfortable with this today and working on that raise in October or whenever the study comes.
Madam Clerk, you said that there is some, you texted me and said somebody is online that wants to speak. Let us know who that person is.
Hello? Hello?
Yes, sir, if you could, okay, Mr. Hughes, you will have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Donald Hughes and I'm a homeowner and reside in Durham, North Carolina. And I just had a few questions. I've been watching this all day and really trying to stay informed on what's going on, but my primary question, there's a six point five million dollar number that's thrown out, that is the maximum that folks are willing to work with. And I just want to know what's the basis of that six point five million? If I was following the slides correctly, what I saw is that the city's currently has a twenty-four point seven percent unappropriated fund balance of that two hundred and approximately sixty-four million dollar general fund. That would leave about sixty, I think it's about sixty-four, sixty-five million in the fund balance. If the goal through the city ordinance is to maintain at least sixteen point seven percent unappropriated fund balance, you're talking about a difference of twenty million dollars. So essentially if we say we're going to spin down below twenty-four point seven percent, let's just throw out a random number, let's say we want to spin down the fund balance so that we maintain twenty percent unappropriated, that gives more money into the ability to give bonuses at a higher level. So I just want to know why are we stuck at the twenty-four point seven percent unappropriated fund balance? And is there an automatic trigger in terms of the credit rating if we decide to drop down to twenty percent or let's say we go to twenty-one percent or even eighteen percent? I just don't want that six point five million to be a sticking point where we can tap into more of our unappropriated fund balance if that is going to get us to a point where we can give folks that are making seventy-five thousand dollars or less the five thousand dollar bonus. We have to be creative. Some of us in the community have economics degrees and masters in public administration and budgeting and I think we can offer some insights, but I don't want it to be limited to just one council member setting an arbitrary ceiling and that restricts or constricts, excuse me, or constrains the conversation that you all are having on the day. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Take a, a moment of personal privilege because we are about, about needed. Let's take about ten minutes so we can think through and everybody, you know, you got to all or none at this point, is you take what you have today or we ask them to rework some numbers. So let's take about ten minutes and we'll come back. So, let's take about ten minutes and we'll come back. All right, we're back in session, everybody. I'm sorry we were taking a little bit longer, but heavy conversations and not light thinking. So um, where we are, I think, is that we either have to vote on the ordinance that's before us, or um, ask that the numbers be reworked and we vote on a different ordinance. And I am open for suggestions and comments about that.
Yeah, I, I, I think we need to kind of rework the numbers. Oh, sorry, sorry. I think we need to rework the numbers.
Madam Mayor, I'm prepared to suspend the rules and vote and see how the vote goes. This is me.
Well, I already know that I, I cannot vote for these numbers like that. So we can...
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'd like to propose to staff, or to the council, that we ask staff to come back with three scenarios for bonuses that would redistribute a total of six point five million dollars among different wage-earning brackets of staff. With workers at the bottom receiving additional funding and workers at the top receiving less, though still some amount of bonus, I would, I would say five hundred and keeping part-time workers at a thousand. If y'all could come back to us with three scenarios that you think make sense for discussion.
Did you say five hundred or do you mean five thousand?
Five hundred for folks at the top. So like a minimum, a minimum of five hundred for full-time workers, a thousand flat bonus for part-time workers, and then for everybody, um, that's every, all the full-time workers, some different options for distributing that funding that would get us closer to, that would get us larger bonuses for lower-paid workers by taking some of the funding away from the higher-paid folks. I know that we only have something like three hundred workers right now that are like over the ninety thousand, so that there's less money at the top. Like, we can't just redistribute it and have everything work out, but to give us some options for getting folks at the bottom some higher, higher bonuses, um, and just, you know, a couple of different options that we could discuss at a, at a future meeting.
They get their thumbs up from me. They get their thumbs up from me. We're talking about them coming back. Let me look at the city manager to see what the timeline will be. So, the, uh, I'm looking at the staff that actually has to run the numbers.
So, you're talking about three options? Um, yeah, I mean, ideally, it would be at a next work sessions, I mean, the, the next work session so that we would have enough time to really look at those numbers and run them correctly and make sure that we can give you the ordinances and break them out by fund.
Wow, okay. Councilwoman.
There was some folks asking, oh, go ahead, I'm so sorry.
One, two, three, three, two, one, that way.
I was just going to say that if it's amenable, it might be a good idea to figure out how long it would take you and then to set a special meeting still, because I do think that it's a ways out for the next work session.
Madam Mayor, just, the, the next work session is October fifth for those folks who were asking from, um, yeah, I'm just making sure I'm not mistaken on that. It is October fifth. Basically, next week, we don't have meetings, so it would be the week after that.
April two.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I, as I said before, you know, I'm amenable to the council that, I, I guess my concern is that because we've already put these numbers publicly, I mean, I, I'm concerned about communicating that. So are we saying that ninety grand is what it takes to live in Durham? And therefore, you, you, you know, you're the pot, that's the number that we can take from to, I mean, I just wish we had done this, you know, before today, now that we've put these numbers out. To, there are folk, I mean, if we, yeah, I, I, I think that the staff has, has done a great job with this, but just knowing that tweaking these numbers now, I'm just concerned that we're communicating that we're suggesting that ninety thousand dollars is the amount you need to make to live in Durham where you can afford actually to have your bonus tweaked. So, what, you know, whatever that brings, but I'll abide by the, obviously, the decision of the council.
I am, I think we have six who are in agreement to kind of rework these numbers with the three different scenarios. Uh, this is a recommendation of four bonus, so all we're doing is asking for other recommendations in my mind that get us closer to what the original ask is of our workers, and I think we owe them that to give us more scenarios to consider other than just one. We, we, we are grateful that the staff is working really hard for that, but I think that we can still tweak it enough to get us to closer to letting our workers know that they are being heard and we are going to ask our management to, to tweak those numbers. And I think the suggestion by Councilwoman Johnson is, is amenable to at least six of us to say we just, we just want some other options to get us there. That's all it says. Council, Councilwoman Williams?
Yeah, I was just going to say, uh, you know, I, um, I would never, I'll never be in, you know, opposition of making sure we are doing what's best for our city employees. I just want to make sure that, um, when we are making decisions like this, or when we're creating policy like this, that we are basing it on actual, um, like, we, we got to know where it's coming from. And I was just asking, uh, you know, I think we were going to do bonuses anyway. I think that was the plan. But I, I just want to make sure that I fully understand where five thousand comes from, where eight thousand comes from, not today, but just, you know, in due time, where five thousand comes from, eight thousand dollars come from, and we're not on the council or on the dais trying to govern based off a number that is deemed arbitrary. I want to know the source or the root or what came, what, what created that number if the living wage is X. If the living wage in Durham is X and every employee in the city gets at least a living wage, I take pride in being able to put a, you know, a bonus and even more pay over the living wage. But I just want to make sure that we are not, um, when we say in the community, that we're not, you know, just, just utilizing arbitrary information. There's a lot that goes into this, so I just want to make sure we're being, that's, when I say fiscally responsible, that's what I'm referring to, and that, and that's just for general information.
May I speak, ma'am? So, even though we will be bringing back, uh, three recommendations, the, the more...
You said three?
Oh, well, I'm sorry. Um, we, we're just trying to listen here and see how many, how many recom, how many options you want to see when we come back and what the limits are around those. And I guess for clarity, one I heard is that you want to keep the same six point five million as the total, and you want to have some level of employee where their bonus is five hundred, and you want to have the other break, the other funding go to other employees. Do you have for us where you want those breaks to be? And I would like for us to have at least one or two or some of those so that we will not just be creating all of them ourselves, because we could create options that, that do not meet what it is you're trying to accomplish here.
I think, so, yeah, I, that makes sense. My first thought is to tie it to AMI in some way. So if we could set the breaks at, you know, eighty, sixty percent of AMI, eighty, a hundred, a hundred and twenty, you know, in, in some manner so that it's a little bit more, so that it does, so it relates in some way to, um, folks' ability to, to afford the cost of living in Durham and isn't just an arbitrary cutoff. Our area median income, so, so folks who are below, say, eighty percent of the area median income qualify for some kinds of affordable housing. For example, sixty percent below, you qualify for, um, for more like housing and support. So it's, it's like, it's kind of like percent of poverty, but it's, but it's locally determined. So like, our AMI is different than, um, than like Chapel Hills or Raleigh's because it's based on like local conditions. Sorry, you, is that okay?
Yeah, so, yeah.
Okay.
So you, you want the breaks to be around AMI?
It's just a suggestion. I don't, I mean, it's, it, I, it's a data-driven way to divide up, to divide it into ranges rather than being arbitrary, but I'm open to other ideas. It's just an idea I had.
Yeah, so, so one, so one of them is, the fifty-seven thousand is actually a little higher than eighty percent of the area median income, so the fifty-seven thousand is already tied to eighty percent, but we didn't have the other percentages there.
Yeah, and I was just about to say that, that the fifty-seven is already about eighty percent.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, so maybe we could look at like more below sixty and then less above a hundred or something like that. I'm, I mean, whatever y'all think makes sense. Like, increasing the bonus for folks who are below sixty percent of AMI. If we have any, maybe we don't.
I have to say, I don't, yeah, we'd have to see what...
Okay, yeah, maybe our minimum is, is above sixty percent of AMI.
I don't know, I have not looked at that, but, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we are all ready to, is that enough specificity to get us started? All right. Okay, so, all right, okay, we'll come back in two weeks and we're going to have some more numbers. Be patient, we got to get there. Be patient, we're getting there. We made a whole lot of progress today, and thank y'all for coming. Two weeks, we have three more sets of numbers to consider. So, and you all will get them when we get them, okay? Yes, normally what happens is on a work session, they are normally published with the agenda, which normally comes out on that Thursday or that Friday before the Monday and Thursday meeting. So look, look at those, be prepared to come back, and we, we're going to get there. We, we're moving along.
Madam Mayor, the, the, the presentation or the numbers will come out on September twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth. That is when they'll be available to council, and that's when they'll be available to the public.
Okay. So let me get through this other side, and then I'll be outside to talk with y'all, and we can have some dialogue then. We just got to get through our boards and commissions, okay? All right, thank you, Ms. Ritter. We look forward to you coming back with those numbers. We're getting there, y'all.